Everyone please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all council members are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Farley. Pastor Brown isn't here. You all have opinions about the prayer. Go for it Pam.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all be here tonight. Give us the wisdom to know the right ways to move on business tonight. We thank you for watching over us and glad you have your hand in this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Alright, we've got a budgeted option which will be Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one. The budget has been available for public review since our last council meeting where we had a public hearing. Resolution. I'll go ahead and read the resolution, I guess. Ordinance of Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rates. This is the standard state form, but our resolution number will be R dash ten dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Be it ordained or resolved by the Atlanta Town Council that for the expenses of Atlanta Civil Town for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year. Unless otherwise. Excuse me, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Atlanta Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form four dash B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner described by the Department of Local Government Finance. This order or resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Atlanta Town Council. The name of the adopting entity is Atlanta Town Council. Type of adopting entity is Town Council, date of adoption ten thirteen of two thousand and twenty-five. Here are the funds. Fund zero zero six one rainy day fund. We're adopting a zero dollar for that. Zero one zero one, the general fund, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars. And the adopted tax levy is one hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. Tax rate of point seven two zero nine. Zero seven zero six local roads and streets, adopted budget of twenty thousand, adopted tax levy of zero. Zero seven zero eight motor vehicle highway, adopted budget of forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Adopted tax levy of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The tax rate of point one six two two. And twenty-nine, excuse me, twenty-three ninety-one cumulative capital development. Adopted budget of four thousand, adopted tax levy of four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. With a tax rate of point zero one six seven. So our adopted budget is four hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The tax revenue, or excuse me, the tax levy will be one hundred ninety thousand, one fifty-eight for a tax rate of point eight nine nine eight. Then home rule funds not reviewed by Department of Local Government Finance. We have Local Road Bridge Match, which is Fund ninety-five zero four. And we've adopted a budget of that for six hundred thousand dollars. That's kind of contingent upon us getting a grant for paving. But that's what that is. Is there a motion to approve resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second, all in favor? Pass this on down the line here. And if you'll could pass that back. We're done there.
And he said, left me in the bed on her desk.
Alright. Next up, we have our prior meeting minutes from the September twenty-second meeting.
I make a motion. Except for minutes is written.
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright. Okay. This will move on to reports, Mr. Schultz.
Earlier this month, I completed the monthly water reported operations for the Met Atlanta. That was sent in item. I'll be working on the one for the wastewater side, which should do on the twenty-eighth. And the ponds did not have a discharge this month. I'll be discharging in November, so we won't have to disinfect, so we won't have to use any chlorine and S O two. And also, I've got an estimate from COLI. They repaired the force main and electrical on the lift station. That's the one for the backwash at the water plant. Luke said that he could hydroexcavate it and then also use the backhoe if needed. And that would save two thousand on the total cost of that.
So there's a leak?
Yeah, there's a.
On the actual force main?
Yeah, there's a crack in it.
Okay.
And if you don't eventually get that fixed, it's just gonna.
It can get worse.
Get worse, but it's right next to your lift station. It's not like further down the line and stuff, so. But it's a confined space entry situation, so it's probably the best to have the contractor with the equipment off to do it.
Is the current hatch?
It's operational, but it's extremely heavy.
Yeah.
And you have to use pry bars in order to.
Oh, really? Okay, so you can't just grab the handle and, okay.
But it's up to you guys as far as replacing that, you know, if you want to save some money or something. Do you have any questions or?
Did they already fix floats and stuff?
They replaced the floats, but conduit's bad, they kind of get the wires to fall through.
Okay.
So he's kind of got it, you know, rigged up in there.
And so that's what this fourth item on here is, the electrical repairs.
Yeah, because that, it's a different company came out, because American Pump, they don't do force main repairs.
Okay.
And American Pump had thought the town would have to replace the whole panel, so.
Yeah.
This guy that came out from COLI said that the panel's in good enough shape where he can work with it.
Right.
Kind of clean up some of the wiring and prevent the shock and sparking up.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we definitely don't want shocks.
No.
So.
But I think he'd be four to six weeks out maybe or something like that.
I totaled those up, if we do the excavation, be nine thousand fourteen dollars. So that doesn't sound horrible.
Say over two thousand, somewhere around two thousand I believe.
Yeah, that's basically right at it.
Is that something we feel comfortable with?
Yeah, we've got very nice, very expensive equipment, we might as well use it to save ourselves. And we want to get it on the books now, because four to six weeks out, we're getting into some colder weather and everything, so go and knock it out now.
How long is it?
It might be earlier than that, but.
Okay, I understand like the ballpark, four to six weeks.
How long's it been this way?
I don't know how long, I've just been here since June, so.
The floats have been messed up for a long time, so it's been a hand activation. But I've never known of any other problem with it.
A crack, you don't know about the, any crack?
Yeah, most of the time, the wood's cold when you're backwashing.
Right.
So you don't visibly see it, but they, they, that American pump came out, you know, popped open the cover so I could show them and stuff, and then that's when we discovered that force main had a crack in it.
So is it?
It, it.
You can actually see it coming back in?
Actually see it.
Okay.
Like back spraying into it.
So it's like, there's the flange that the pump sits against, and then it's behind that, between that and the wall of the structure?
Well, there's like a sleeve that comes out of the lift station at the force main. So adds into.
Okay.
So then you can see water spraying back, and then when you shut off the pumps.
Yeah.
Then it, you know, washes back into the lift station again.
It's getting fixed.
I would agree with that.
It's going to come out of the water and sewer budget, correct?
Yeah, it could probably be, Jennifer would know better, it could probably be split between them, because it's sewer. But it exists for the.
I make a motion, we approve this quote, do we, first of all, do we need to get another one? Or is this the people that, this is kind of specific to them to?
There's probably only a handful of companies that could even touch something like this, so.
Well, then I make a motion that we go ahead and approve this.
With us doing the excav?
With us doing the excavation and back though, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, you want to arrange that?
Yeah, yeah.
You all need to sign it, send it in or?
Here, I'll trade you.
Okay. I can get that to Annie or Jennifer tomorrow and they can send it in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Schultz?
I do not.
Alright. We don't have an attorney, we don't have a Luke, we don't have a Rick.
Quick meeting.
Old business, all diamond is on you.
I have some stuff with that. I talked to Annie and Jennifer and they said that they have been getting calls since the festival. They've added them to the list of callbacks, and I didn't know that they were just putting them on a list and having us call them back. They're not giving them any information or.
Okay.
So if it's okay with everybody, I have this list, I would like to pick the lead on that and call.
Probably also need to make sure that it's in the paper.
I was going to ask about that, if you want to advertise.
I think that's good.
In the reporter and then anywhere else.
Yeah. I don't know, where else, where else do people look at advertisements around here?
Say Reporter and The Times.
Yeah.
Marketplace.
Marketplace. Tipton, I didn't even think about that. Mm-hmm, okay. It's a good idea.
Dude, how do we want that to work? Do we want offers to go to the lawyers? Do we want offers mailed in here?
Eventually, the attorneys would have to be involved. I think they've got to see who's actually serious and.
I want to be able to give them any information while I'm talking to them, so if.
Right.
Just tell them to send.
I don't intend for us to use a Realtor, but our attorney would be involved at some point, but.
Okay, so just.
Their attorney or their Realtor, if they're serious, can put together an offer and give it to us.
Send it here. Send it to town, okay. And then we can forward it to the attorneys.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
If it's reasonable.
Yeah, hopefully we don't just have. Something that a lot of people are interested in, that's a long list there, so.
Yeah, and one guy's on here twice, he called back from before.
Okay.
We did get the signs there up.
Hopefully, hopefully that all goes as planned. Alright, library is our next order of business, the only thing I have that I'd like to find. Oh, you're welcome to. Yeah, let's go ahead and do it right now.
Y'all just kind of like bolter it over me.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So you guys were talking about you have multiple offers on that.
No offers yet, but multiple interested parties, we'll see that.
Okay, so my question is, like I stated the last time, we are running out of time. You guys have multiple callbacks, I know that he stated in the last meeting that he was going to call a couple of people back that was already on a list at that point. I don't know if you, did you?
I tried and didn't get any answer when I called them, so I'm going to work from the list now and go down the line.
Okay, so the issue that we're going to run into is that we open up our registration in December. And so we need to have somewhere to tell the people that we're playing. So I don't know, I guess we're kind of running into a rock and a hard place. We would love to use the diamonds, but we can't continue to come back to each meeting and have you, and I know, I understand the whole process, but we can't keep coming back and pushing it later and later and later and not having an actual answer. That's where we're going to get us into trouble. And it's not just us as a, as a board, it's the whole community.
No, no, absolutely.
We don't have anywhere to play.
Yeah.
Because we, if we can't use Atlanta, we have to find somewhere else to put ten thousand dollars into and get it playable for the next season. Our mayor thinks that he's going to have at least a diamond ready, and that'll be Peewee. So we still have minor, major, and Baybrook to try and figure out. So we're just trying to get a feel for things. I know I said it'd come back and hopefully you guys would have some sort of an answer, but I'm thinking that that is, we don't have some sort of answer.
We know between our last meeting and now was the festival, so we have been somewhat preoccupied. But, but, yeah, I don't have an answer to you for you, I do think that what we concluded at the last. Well, I was going to say, I think. I'm under the impression that if we have the ability to sell it, if somebody gives us a reasonable offer, we're going to take it. And so that's our goal, and we've got a list of, what, twenty, twenty-five names there of people that have called, so I would, I would have a hard time believing that some sort of sale wouldn't happen at some point.
But as he mentioned, they're not giving any information out, they're just taking their names and their numbers and having you guys come back. So they don't know that you put a price tag of four hundred and fifty thousand on it, right?
Correct, and actually, I don't know if that's, I mean, that's kind of a starting point number anyway, I mean, we're willing to.
Oh, okay, because in your guys' minutes, it says that your attorney approved the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, he said that was okay.
He said, because it's between our two appraisals, and so the biggest thing is to get as much as we can, but we can't go below the bottom appraisal.
Okay.
But if there was a pretty wide gap between them.
Okay, is there a way to have those twenty-five people called back by the next meeting, or?
I think we could do that.
I'm going to do that.
Is that something that you might actually be able?
That's what we talk about, and yes, I'm going to do that.
Okay, so if I come back to the next meeting, would you maybe have a better answer for me, whether you've had somebody that has a real, genuine, like, want in that diamond? Or is it now at the point where you guys are pretty dead set, we're going to sell it, we're going to take a reasonable offer, you should probably go ahead and look for somewhere else? Because that's kind of the time management where we're at this point. Because it'll take us a month and a half to get anything ready to play on, at least. And luckily, we've had some pretty warm weather, but we haven't been working on something else, thinking that, you know, you might be able to access Atlanta and have, have use of that again. Plus, we need to know about the other lease that we have with the farmer, whether we needed to renew that or not for the grass field, or whether he can go ahead and just till it up and be done with it. So, I don't know.
I think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place ourselves, because we want you guys to play there, we like having you there, I do anyway. But we also want to sell the property, and I don't know that we can put in a contract that you guys are allowed to play there and still be able to sell it, that might be a sticking point for somebody wanting to buy it, that it's in use all next summer. So I don't, I don't know what the best option there is, I want to talk to the attorney some more and say, and honestly, I think we need to talk about it to say, what do we think? If that's something that would stop somebody from buying this, knowing that there's a time limit put on it for next year?
Well, in reality, it's not the whole summer, it's four months, so we only use it four months.
Till July first, is that fair?
I believe that we are not going to exceed past the end of June this year. I think that depending on if our mayor is going to stick with his, his plan, Peewee is what runs us over.
Okay.
The other teams, we can travel outside of the end of June, we can go other places, we can, you know, try and make that work at the end.
In the June, so.
But Peewee doesn't travel, so we don't do, Peewee plays each other. So their games have to be there, we don't have another field for them to play on. However, minor, major, we play La Pal, we play Sheridan, we play Hyatt's, we play, you know, those other ones. Or we could possibly go to them and say, hey, we do have the ability to use the field, but after this point, we have to vacate and be done. So I don't know if that would help with whoever you decide, you know, whoever has the.
That does help, that gives us a date to say it would be available July one.
Yeah, that's a question.
I mean, when I'm talking to people, I can tell them that.
Yeah, ask what they.
Yeah, that's a problem. I will have an answer on every one of these calls by next meeting.
Okay, you guys care to put me on the agenda for the next meeting?
We can do that.
That way I can come back and see what's going on, and I'll let our board know again that, you know, we kind of, but I would think, would be my best guess, is that our board is going to have to call like an end time where we're going to have to start focusing on something else versus.
Oh, I don't.
Versus that. That's just, I mean, we can't let our whole.
Sure.
Our whole leagues go down the drain because we're waiting and, you know, waiting for something we don't even know is going to happen, so.
Agreed.
Unfortunately, that sucks, but it's just the way it is. So, okay, well, thank you for your time.
Do you want me to call you, is it okay if I call and when I get an answer?
That would be fantastic.
See me later, to make sure I have your name and number, are you?
I've got it.
That's my cousin, she can give it to you. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll get your name and number, and as soon as I complete this and talk to Murray and the rest of the people, then I'll give you a callback, so you don't have to wait for two weeks.
I would really appreciate that, thank you so much.
Yes.
And I guess I will maybe see you guys next meeting, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks. Looks like somewhere between twenty and twenty-five.
Twenty-five with one duplicate, so twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Me too. I hope, I would say half of them are just calling to inquire, and the other half may have an interest, that would be my guess, so. I'll call them and see what happens.
Alright, library, I'm still waiting on that quote from the second mason who I was very confident in. So I'll try to touch base with him, I know he said he was going to be doing some travel, so hopefully that's a reason. But in any case, other than that, I think the lift is in the process of being made. So I've got to get on finding somebody for millwork, so I think Tim, you said you have somebody that you've worked with before.
I talked to him, I talked to him and they said they don't do outside doors.
Okay, alright, I'll work on finding a door guy. And then got to find a contractor who can cut the hole in the floor and do all that stuff for the, for the lift, and then build those couple of walls. There's not much construction that has to happen, there really isn't, but.
Are we, do we have to get a permit and? From Hamilton County to, no?
We, it's in Atlanta, it's in our building jurisdiction.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We have to get a building permit from Rick then.
It's probably not a bad idea, I mean, he should look over everything that's on there anyway, yeah, yeah. I think that's a good idea, so we'll figure all that out.
When, when do you? Sorry.
Sorry.
When do you expect that needing to be done?
The construction part?
Yeah.
I don't know what the lead time on the lift is, but I'd say between one and two months, be my guess.
November, December area. I mean, if you want, I can help you with it if you want, I have the tools. I assume we still have that, all that lumber sitting in the.
I'm not building anything.
You're not building it?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. You made it sound like you wanted to build the floor or walls. Okay. I'd be happy to help if that, if it comes to that.
Alright, yeah, there will be little things here and there that I'm sure need some hands, but I think we can find a, hopefully, some kind of a contractor that will meet our needs. Okay, sidewalk, the survey has been ordered. They're gonna be here this week to do it. Soon as that's done, I'll get a final number from. For concrete and then we can make that choice. We're, we've been working on. We've identified a terrible stretch of sidewalk, it's on Walnut Street and we've decided that we want to go ahead and replace it. It was more than we had planned to spend on sidewalks, but we do have the money available and so we gotta start somewhere. So we're gonna start there this year and we're gonna try to keep it going a block or two a year. So there's money budgeted for next year as well, so.
With the sidewalk getting fixed, will there be something in Loop, or somewhere that people will have to take it clean, take care of it?
Uh, that's a good question. The question's about, uh, if the adjacent homeowner will have any requirements for care.
They walked here tonight and there's some that, yeah, they may not be done forever, so I have to share. But people blow their grass and just leave it down. I mean, so it's pointless to do it if we can't keep them nice.
Sure.
Couldn't get it.
Well, the main reason is, that's, it's, it's town property, so it's a legal hazard for the town.
I understand.
We have to get it fixed.
Yeah.
Being that it's, being that it's town property. Up to the end of the sidewalk. Well, I don't know how.
I'll, I'll ask our attorneys about that and see if they can research what other communities do with their sidewalks, see if there's anything that we can do there. So that's a, it's a good point. I've heard of like. Other states where they require, and I don't know how legally you do this, but they require, for example, that you shovel your sidewalk. I don't know that that's fair, but I'm just saying, there's other, the point is, there's other places that do have requirements on the adjacent property yard, so.
But that, again, that's. That, where I live, that they did that. But they didn't, oh, we, I owned the sidewalk, not the city.
Oh.
So I was responsible for all clearing and.
But it's your own property.
It's my property.
But you have to make it available for public use?
Yes. The eminent domain, you have forty-five feet or whatever from the middle of the road, so, but the homeowner in Ohio.
Scripted easement, something like that.
They're required to take care of the sidewalks, replace them when necessary and snow removal if necessary. I lived in a, I lived in a school zone and kids would walk and it was a hundred dollar fine if you didn't shovel the walk, so. But this, this is different then, cuz we own them.
Right. Okay, any other old business from the council?
Trunk or treat, can I say a few words about that? Um. Been to working with Annie and, uh, Jennifer. The two churches are going to take care of the food and preparing it. We've got the shelter house rented that, rented out for that. Um. We are, the emails to have donations are going out tomorrow. I'm sending flyers to the schools to let everybody know. Um, if somebody wants to donate, feel free. If you want to put a car in, talk to me. Um, we need cars, we need people, that's, the town will be supplying candy to give you to hand out. Um, all we need are bodies to hand candy out, so. We're hoping to have a bunch of kids. I thought last year was not a bad turnout for the first year.
It was nice.
I think we're also gonna have a fire truck here, so that would be Jen, uh, Annie's working on that.
Barricades, so people can't drive through.
I will talk to Luke about putting barricades up. Do we need to have a formal motion to do that or is that just something we can just tell?
Um, we don't technically have a street commissioner right now, so, but we can do that as a board, so if we wanted to shut down the roads through the park.
We can do that without.
I mean.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and, no, you can motion.
Well, I make a motion that we shut off. The streets, I don't know the name of that street, what's the name of that street?
So this is Railroad Street, that's Walton Street.
Yeah.
And then the one that runs.
Post office.
That's actually an alley.
That's not a street.
So the streets and alleys in the park?
Yeah, I I make a motion that we barricade all streets and alleys in the park.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
And this is, sorry.
October twenty-fifth.
For the event on October twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
So October twenty-fifth at one o'clock is our trunk or treat.
Yep, it's a Saturday. It's also the same day Arcady's having their festival, but.
It'll be alright.
Is that Saturday?
It is a Saturday, yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, yes, there were multiple.
Yes.
Discussions about that after. That's all.
Okay. Alright, new business, we have resolution number R dash ten dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two. The Town Council of the Town of Atlanta, Indiana, Hamilton County, do hereby make a resolution to transfer the sum of ten thousand dollars from the general fund. To the rainy day fund. This resolution will satisfy the Department of Local Government Finance requirements of written documentation of this authorization. Asked this the thirteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution R ten twenty twenty-five dash two.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Any other? New business from the council?
How did the festival go? Do we know yet?
No.
Logistically, I thought it went very well.
I thought, uh. We lucked out on weather. I'm grateful for the volunteers as well. We did have a issue with our trash contractor. They were only able to send one truck each day. We typically get two. But we were able to still get it done without too much trouble, so. Thankful for, like I said, all the volunteers. We did have quite a few people from town help out. So that was nice. Our new business, questions or comments from anyone in attendance? Yes, ma'am. You win, ma'am.
Hi, I'd like to know when we'll get a breakdown from the festival?
I don't know, I'm gonna assume it's gonna be at our next meeting. And I'm looking forward to seeing that as well.
Okay, and then my second question is, um, were you contacted by I D E M? In regards to?
I've not had any contact from I D E M other than, um. Our, uh, we had a letter following a wastewater, um, inspection and so that's been responded to.
How were you contacted from I D E M about falsification of numbers?
They contacted me and then they said something about. Checking further into it, but then.
Okay, were you involved in that?
No.
Okay.
No, and I don't believe anybody falsifies.
I'm just curious, since I got a follow-up call, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, haven't heard anything. Anything else? Well, thank you all for being here. Uh, is there a motion to sign our claims and adjourn? We'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Will we just have the festival meeting next?
I believe so, yeah.
Jennifer's on vacation this week, so probably next, next time.
I know I got a lot of comments about the band starting breakfast. They, the vendors really like that, they go around.
I, it sounds like they did pretty well too. It sounds like it was a good.